I'm going to call the Willett City Council Open Session back in. We have nothing to report out from closed session. And we've already had a roll call, so I'm going to move to the pledge. If you'll join me in the pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and Happy Valentine's Day. Before we get started with public communication, I would like you to join me in a moment of silence honoring the memory of former city council member Ron Mitchell. He served from 1969 to 1974, which was two plus years, and we'll just take a moment here. All right. Thank you. We're going to move on to public communications. And the city council welcomes input from the audience. I don't see any here this evening, but if there were, everyone has the right to speak on matters that are not on the agenda. And members of the public are asked to observe the rules of decorum. Is there any members of the public that would like to speak to us? All right, still seeing none. I'll move on to the proclamation for National Black History Month. I have before me a proclamation that I will read. This is a proclamation of the Willett City Council in honor of Black History Month. Whereas during Black History Month, the city of Willett is proud to acknowledge and celebrate the achievements made by African-Americans to our community, state, and country. And whereas African-Americans have played significant roles in the history of California's economic, cultural, spiritual, and political development while working tirelessly to maintain and promote their culture and history. Whereas in 1976, Black History Month was formally adopted to honor and affirm the importance of Black history throughout our American experience, which dates thousands of years and includes some of the greatest, most advanced, and innovative societies that we can all draw inspiration from. Whereas the theme for Black History Month 2024 focuses on the invaluable contributions of African, Caribbean, and Black American influences on the visual and performing arts. And whereas African-Americans have and currently enriched all forms of artistic expression, including literature, fashion, folklore, language, film, music, architecture, culinary, and other forms of cultural representations. So now, therefore, I, Suprema Rodriguez, Mayor of the city of Willett, along with Vice Mayor Herardo Gonzalez and council members Mad Strong, Larry Stransky, and Greta Conny do hereby proclaim February 2024 as Black History Month in Willett. Sign this 14th day of February 2024. All right, our next order of business. We have no enactment of ordinances before us. We have one item on the consent calendar for the minutes of January 24, 2024.
I need to approve.
Thank you.
Hold second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Anybody from the public? Again, seeing none. I'll call for the vote.
Councilmember Conny?
Yes.
Strong?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Hudry?
Yes. All right.
Sorry. I said mayor.
That's fine. The motion carries. All right. We have no monthly activity reports, as those are at the next meeting. For commissions, agencies, and authorities, we have no business before us, so I'll move on to the city manager reports and recommendations.
Once again, Madam Mayor, city council members, there's no specific action item that I'm going to bring forward to your attention tonight. I just want to give a brief update. Last week, I attended the League of California City Manager Conference. Approximately 720 attendees. It was one of the largest conferences they held in the last 10 to 12 years. Lot of good presentations. Once again, the division in the state between large and small metro rural areas is very clear. But on that front, I'd like to convey to the council that we do work well with our counterparts and my colleagues in adjacent communities, both in Mendocino County, Lake County, and Humboldt County. We're all part of the Redwood Empire Division with the League of Cities. Our representative, Sarah Sanders, or what's actually her title? Division Manager?
League rep.
League rep. She who does an excellent job in keeping us informed of legislative actions and anything going on in Sacramento. Lot of good content regarding what's happening with the state's budget. It's still murky what is going to happen, what's the final cuts are going to be. As it looks right now, cities of our size and positioning are not going to experience too many deficits or shortfalls that is coming out of Sacramento in our way and ways of funding. So that's a good way, a good perception for us to, as we move forward for budgeting process. It was good to meet with colleagues from large and small, north and south in the state. Once again, I spent a lot of good time working with and discussing with, you know, our adjacent communities and the city managers there. We all have the same issues. It sounds like any city in the state, especially if you're rural, you know, less than 35,000, you have the same problems. You know, we're like, oh, you got that problem? Yes, we got that problem, we got that problem. The larger cities have the same problems, but they just have more money and resources to throw at. I'm not saying they're solving the problems, but they're just throwing resources at them. Once again, I probably got about 10, 12 hours of continuing head credit for ICMA credentialing, so that's good on that aspect of it. And just on that note, as we're referencing the Cal League of Cities, once again, as a reminder, March 8th is going to be the division meeting here, which Kathy and Dolores are doing a great job in bringing all together behind the scenes. They have a good program, a good deal is going to be put forward, so I strongly encourage participation from the council members. And that's what I have.
Do we have a sense that everybody will be able to attend?
What time is that going to be?
Usually, the general business meetings at 1:00 or legislative, and then usually about 3:00 o'clock is when the general.
Okay. The dinner starts at 5:00. It'll be cocktails and hors d'oeuvres, and they're going to have a...
And a location?
A location is the museum. They're going to have a tour of the museum for council members and the attendees.
And it's been my experience at the different cities when I've gone that some council members, because of other commitments, sometimes don't make it for part of it. They'll make it, they'll pop in for, some just pop in for the dinner, some pop in for other things. The idea being that you come in and kind of see your counterparts from other cities.
And just, sorry. And just for clarification, we received late notice. We weren't scheduled to hold upcoming event. They reached out to us and said, can you do a short notice? And we're pulling it together, so...
I didn't agree to this because I didn't know it was happening. In fact, usually I wait and find out what are the dates so that I can calendar it. And when Dolores sent out the email, like I called Sarah, goes, so, we're doing it in Willett? So it's kind of something goes, yeah, we're trying to see you pull it in.
Sarah knew that on a short notice and that she could count on us to put a good event together. I think what her confidence was like a swan. It's very graceful on the surface, but below surface, there's a lot of thrashing going about. But I think we're beyond the thrashing part, and now it's just a smooth downhill glide. But once again, Dolores and Kathy have done a great job pulling it together and working with a lot of partners in this community and donations and pulling things together at the last minute. So I want to give those recognition to the various partners that we reached out to for support and help.
Also, this is another example of Willett being centrally located when it comes to in the Redwood region. When the weather turns like this, sometimes you're making it to Eureka or to Blue Lakes or those areas up there, sometimes can get a little dicey. So for us, it's pretty good, but sometimes some of the folks from Cloverdale, they kind of balk and go all the way north, and the people all the way north balk and go all the way south, so...
Well, it's an opportunity for us to showcase what Willett has to offer to members of other city councils. I had a chance to talk with Kathy and hear about the details, and I feel very confident both Dolores and Kathy have the planning well underway, and it's going to go nicely. So, yeah, thank you, thank you. I'm hoping we'll all be able to attend.
We're trying to have sun perfect throughout the day. That's the last thing. That's what I have. Thank you.
All right, thank you. We'll move on to the action items. The first one being to adopt a resolution increasing the change order amount of 10% for the rodeo grounds and concession stand repair project number 2023-06, authorizing an additional $3,558.91.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, council members. Davy Bowles, your building official. Thank you for taking this time to review this. We have a pretty small... Oops. I didn't see it. I'm going to slide on the glass.
Next one over. There you go. Nimblo.
So what you have before you is a request to adopt a resolution. We entered into a contract with DMR Builders to repair the rodeo ground and the concession stand. Their bid was $249,000 approximately, a little less. Council authorized 10% change orders at that time. During construction, we encountered a handful of changes. So this part of the scope of the project was to repair the main electrical service. The electrical service is on the opposite side of this wall. It's on the exterior of the building. This gutter trough, gutter tray, whichever you use, can typically, it's a main line that comes into your subpanels. When we opened this up and took it apart, we realized it's been spliced in multiple locations. This is a big no-no because you have no way of turning this power off through your breaker system. So typically, all your main power comes up through the disconnect, and so these are live wires going out to where they go. So that's, so we had to spend a significant amount of money repairing that, and ultimately what we did...
Can you talk just a little bit louder?
I'm sorry. Yeah, I'll talk to her. I'm looking at the pictures, and I realize I'm...
Davy, when you say no-no, that obviously translates to this was not to code.
Yes, it's not standard practice. Yeah. Definitely not a good idea. So ultimately, we end up...
This was not work done by anyone.
It's, I do not know who did this work. I hope not. This work, as you can see by the pictures, it predates probably most of us. So ultimately, we end up having to put a secondary subpanel in because length of wires and being able to basically terminate all these appropriately, we end up putting a new 200-amp subpanel in, in addition to the new 200-amp service panel we put in. Big safety upgrades. The main reason for the service panel is this has an old knife switch disconnect inside. There's no disconnect for power on the exterior of the building, and so when the tree fell in a dangerous situation, the only way to disconnect power in there is to actually go into the building and turn that off. And so you always want to have an exterior disconnect. And so that was, that was the original reasons for upgrading the main service panel, and then doing that, we found the line, we found additional problems that needed repair. So the second change order we did was actually to replace this back wall. So when the painter came to take a look at it, the exterior back wall of the concession stand was never nailed off properly. It didn't have a paint, didn't have a seal finish, so there was nothing protecting the wood. And so the actual plywood was pretty delaminated and allowing water and moisture to get into the building. And so that was the second change order we decided to do, that no, you go ahead and fix this back wall. So we removed the siding, and that kind of opened up the change order number three here, where, so in the wall concealed, we have junction boxes. And so there's multiple problems with this. First of all, you can't have splices and junction boxes concealed in a wall. It all has to be accessible to basically check the wiring and repair anything that, you know, does come undone. And you can see this is Romex wiring, which is that non-metallic cable in, we'll call it Romex, but in-n cable, and using metal boxes. And so the real problem with this is you have, when you knock out those rings, it's a very sharp edge. There's nothing protecting your wiring from getting cut. Over time, slight movements in the building will slowly cut that wire and you'll have to park. And you can see by this picture on the left, you can actually see, cursor point, but you can see some of the, you know, existing charring where this actually has occurred already. I don't think the next picture has. And so you can see, these are, so this is kind of the second part of it. So those were concealed in the wall. These are actually the backsides of all the outlet boxes. These are just two examples, but they were all wired this way. And so you basically have that non-metallic cable going into a metallic box without any protection. And there you can see that this one did have an arcing issue sometime. And so this can be as simple as it'll arc, and then the breaker will actually do its job trip, and then someone goes, why is this out? And they'll turn the breaker back on. And it'll have arced, and it won't arc again, but now you still have this exposed electrical wire now. So this problem could have been, you know, definitely a hazard. So we rewired all the, ultimately, we ended up having to rewire all the electrical outlets in that building and repair this condition. The other one was the plumbing. So in our contract, we had repair of the plumbing. When we actually got into it and took the walls off and actually saw the extent of the damage, so we ended, you know, it would have been repairs from the, you know, existing parts of the plumbing that were still intact to another existing part. And so when we sat down with the plumber and we looked at how much of the actual plumbing we were going to leave in place versus replacing what was there, it was a much better idea just to replace all this old copper. In the walls, we had copper pipes with, you know, that have been cut in the past and repatched, and, you know, the existing stuff in the wall didn't look like it was going to survive, you know, the decade. So we ended up giving the contractor a change order to replumb the entire bathroom facility. So all this old copper and all these, you know, we had like strange, you know, plastic connections that, you know, over old repairs and stuff. So all that got removed and replaced with text, and so, which is much better product and should last, I don't know, our generation hopefully.
Davy, this is the concession stand?
This is actually the bathroom. So there's basically a two, yeah. And then, and I apologize, I didn't have any fresh pictures of the pine ceiling, but the last, the change order that basically kind of put us over the threshold of our 10% was the pine ceiling in the concession stand. So when we put this out to bid, we had, the building had no plywood, which is, you know, we would require a flame-resistant, you know, material for the roofing walls. And so the existing facility didn't have that. It was just the pine ceiling. We bid it, both the bathroom and the concession stand, with standard sheet rock ceiling. And so in discussion with the rodeo, it was one of the main contentions. They really wanted that same look that they had with their original ceiling. The way we constructed it, instead of doing the beam and the rafters, we used scissor trusses, so that didn't allow us to put in like the pine decking. So what we ended up doing is we put in the 5/8 sheet rock, which was required by the bid, and then we put in a false tongue group pine facade up there to give them the same look and feel of what they had existing. And so that kind of sums it up. So is there any questions on about the work that was done? And I apologize, I didn't put any fancy, nice pictures in here. We were planning on doing a presentation with it all finished and to you guys so you can see what it looks like, but this was just focused on the change orders.
Davy, did we share all of this, pictures of what we found that wasn't the code?
No, we did not at the time. And in hindsight, I feel like we've learned a lot on this project, and I take that forward as far as working with our community partners and sharing information as we find issues like this. We'll do that in the future. But, yeah, we basically found the problem, and we directed them how to fix it, so some of these things are...
And we still are waiting on our claim with the insurance.
Yeah. I believe the holdup is we're waiting for our final invoicing to give to the insurance company. And we're almost there. So with this change order, we can write their, with this approval, we can write their last change order and do their final billing and et cetera.
Okay. The last complaint that I heard or concern that they had expressed was about the look of the inside ceiling, and it sounds like that situation's been rectified by changing the facade, even though we went a little bit over budget.
Yeah, I think they should be happy with the product.
Good.
As close as we can get to what they have.
And I think the other complaint was the metal roof.
And the metal roof is not, so the ceiling is something we could actually rectify, you know, by putting a little more money at it. The roof was something, it was another $20,000, which would have been way over budget, and, you know, for the, we have the same warranty, I know it's a different product, but ultimately it's the same 30-year warranty. The rest of the buildings there are all, you know, all the facilities there now have all the same green color, you know, shingles, so they should all be matching. And it just would, it wouldn't be anyone's best interest to take off a brand-new roof and replace it with another metal roof. That's what we didn't look for. And we bid both of those with, when we put this out to bid, it was, you know, get it done as fast as possible. So shingles are on the shelf, you can buy them. Metal roofs, we had to order, and so that was why those were specified.
Okay. Any other questions? Nope. All right. So this is an action item. Is there anybody from the public? Still seeing none. I'll bring it back up here.
I'd like to move, when we adopt the accompanying resolution, authorize the city manager to accept the change orders to 11.5%.
The 10%?
It's 11.5%.
It's increasing from 10% to 11.5%.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
One second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. There's no further discussion. I'll call for the vote.
Councilmember Conny?
Yes.
Strong?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Mayor Hudry?
Yes. So the motion carries authorizing an additional $3,558.91 to increase, for the rodeo grounds and concession stand project. All right, moving on to item 9B, to adopt a resolution accepting the construction of the 2023 sidewalk repair project and authorizing the filing of the notice of completion.
Hello, Madam Mayor and city council members. This was the 23 sidewalk preserve, repair project, excuse me. We're looking for a notice of completion. We completed it with precision concrete cutting. They completed 419 sidewalk panels, did 847 lineal feet of repairs to correct hazards and ADA complacency. They did a great job. What we, what they did, their process allows us to grind down and make safe these sidewalk uplifts without repairing and removing them. So we saved a considerable amount of money. Our final billing on it was $35,088, which was considerably less than having to replace all those panels. We're going to be coming back next city council meeting to look at the 24, doing another sidewalk assessment, a more broad one that'll cover the whole city, and do another round of this in the other problem areas. So they did a great job. I think it's going to help a lot with safety. We took care of the worst ones around city buildings, schools. It was a considerable amount of square footage, lineal footage, 847 feet. And you may have seen some of the areas that they've ground down around city hall, and it made a big difference in safety matters, so, yeah.
All right. Well, I'm happy with the quality of their work, and I feel like that this was a financially responsible amount of money to spend on the public's behalf for safety.
And they were recommended through CIRA, our insurance provider and everything, and it helps us with, you know, safety here and our insurance, yes.
Does council have any questions or comments?
I would like to move approval of the staff recommendation for accepting the construction of the 2023 sidewalk repair project.
Hold a second.
All right, we have a motion and a second, and I'll call for the vote.
Councilmember Conny?
Yes.
Okay. Yes, thank you. Any public comment? We still have no public, but thank you. All right, now I'll call for the vote.
Councilmember Conny?
Yes.
Strong?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Mayor Hudry?
Yes. All right. The motion carries to accept the construction of the sidewalk repair project and moving on to adopt a resolution approving an amendment to the Professional Service Agreement with Land Logistics, Inc. for professional planning service for an additional $22,080. And our presenting staff member will be just duly our community development director.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Good evening, council. And Andy, if you want to provide public comment, I can come take over for the camera for a little bit for you. Okay, all right. Yeah, so a little bit of kind of like bad news, good news. I mean, the bad news is we still have, you know, one position that has gone unfilled in the community development department for going on three years now, and we have not gotten any less ambitious with our workload. And so we do still have an identified shortfall in staff capacity, and we're seeking a contract amendment with Land Logistics to bring on Logan Shine, a contract planner, for an amount not to exceed $22,080. And this would represent about 16 hours of staffing for 12 weeks, about three months. The good news is that it's three months that we're requesting respectively, and the good news for that reason is we have been able to fill the long vacant city planner position. That was previously the community development specialist that Jim Robbins filled. And Mr. Connor Stack, local talent, definitely, I think, has the skill set to become a successful city planner, land use planner, and Mr. Stack begins a week from next Monday. It's a little bit raw in the skill set, doesn't have a ton of experience in the planning field, so the hope is, is we do have some important projects identified for Mr. Shine if we are able to get approval of the contract tonight. We have Connor starting up soon, building up his skill set. We're looking for a little bit of assistance over the next few, for months, from Mr. Shine to specifically assist with a mobile food vendor ordinance. Also, council's aware, it's been brought up, I think through discussions with the land use element update, the state-approved Senate bill SB 9, which allows for second dwelling units, allows for urban lot splits. Essentially, it's a tool identified by the state to support infill development and help deal with the overall state housing crisis whereby essentially there's some buy-right opportunities for property owners with a residential zoning district to be able to build these secondary units or complete these urban lot split up against objective standards. So we certainly would seek Mr. Shine's assistance with putting together some informational items, some applications, informational discussion with council, and hopefully bringing forward a SB ordinance and adding that to our zoning code as well and capturing state law, essentially. Beyond that, we do have Taylor. She continues to be a godsend. She does an incredible amount of work, high quality, but we still do have capacity issues with our current planning. I did note, you know, we have some cannabis activity permits that do need to be processed, but we have a plethora of other current planning projects that need to be... but we have a plethora of other current planning projects that need to be processed as well. And again, we don't have control about how many of those come in. But obviously, people are paying for those and have an expectation that they'll get completed in a reasonable amount of time. So we would also have some of that work for Mr. Shine to assist the department with.
Connor? Thank you. Councils, go ahead.
A question. Can I ask an additional $22,080? Is that the already contracted contract for some additional?
Yeah, thank you for that. I can clarify. So we, back in December, Council approved a contract for $170,000 for land logistics services. And that was essentially to support our contract planner, Leilani Shine. And that money's been set aside for her services through the end of the year. And again, she's supporting part of that contract to support community development. A larger part of that contract is to support the city manager's office as well as services and facilities. So she's very much a hero for hire that's being shared. And we, yeah. So this essentially is specifically, for all intents and purposes, for Logan to assist us.
Because it's with Land Logistics, so hypothetically, it could be Logan doing these projects, but because it's Land Logistics, it could also be Leilani as part of some of this too. Is that correct? Because it's one company that we're just adding extra money for the potential of this Logan doing these things, right?
Yeah, that's my understanding. If for some reason we decide that it's a better fit, or for whatever reason, Leilani, if you could help with the SB 9, and we're going to shift Logan over to helping with, you know, a task that Leilani was working on, like the sidewalk ordinance or something, we, there is that flexibility. Yeah.
Okay.
But at this point, we've got things identified for Leilani that she's working on, and they're, yeah.
I was just realizing that we have been understaffed, and so we have a backlog and a need to address these things. But in general, when we are asked to approve upside contracts, I'd like to make sure that we have some kind of analysis of why we can't do it, in how staff work, what the cost differential is when we, especially if we're going to do this frequently and big amounts of money, just filling a specific need, it makes the question.
So, you know, when we have a specific project where we know what it's for and we really do need that extra, extra help from outside, but in general, I want to be cautious about contracting out when it might be more efficient to fill those vacancies and handle things within our existing staff. So, but this one sounds like you have already done that, and this is kind of filling a gap until this new planner is fully up on board. So it makes sense.
Okay. Understood what you said. Appreciate the comment.
If I could just follow up on that. Like Dusty mentioned, we've been trying to recruit that position for well over two and a half years. It's been tough. We've found a good candidate. He's a little raw in the essential planning skills, but he went through a pretty thorough background and assessment of his credentials for the position. And we feel that he's going to be a good person as he grows into the position. But right now, we still have this backlog, and we recognize that this is kind of a combination. This is finding your utility player. We're trying to strengthen the role of Taylor Perry as a senior planner, get her feet under her. He's looking at more comprehensive, long-range planning prospects. We've got to get Connor up to speed on current planning. So, and Leilani has been working on, you know, the ordinances and some even longer-range projects that we were just talking today about, street maintenance, street classification schemes, complete streets, great streets. We're looking at more, we're expanding our planning capacity in ways that we haven't done before. But we're starting to go in that direction, but now we need to focus on the current planning applications that come in, building permits. And that's going to be Connor's forte as he gets his feet under him and builds. But right now, Dusty has recognized that he needs this, a person he can plug in, move around on the board for a couple of weeks here till everyone gets their role in place.
I move that we adopt the accompanying resolution approving an amendment to the services agreement with Land Logistics.
You know what? I'll second it, but just to add another quick question for Manny. Budget-wise, we have the money in the budget for this?
So we have contingency funding that's set aside for other items such as this, and so we'll be utilizing some contingency funding for this and also some major K funding.
Okay.
Is that last one?
Major K funding, because we already identified that major K funding is a part of this.
So you have a second? All right, we have a motion and a second. And I just want to state that I had some initial reservations about this. I was struggling with spending another $20,000 plus on planning. But then I had the opportunity to get some more facts and information. And I looked at the list that the planning department is working on and thought long and hard about the goals that we've set forth as a council and what we want to achieve. And this is a short term. It's three months. It's, so with that in mind, I've made my decision on what I think is best for the community. With that, we'll call for the vote.
Councilmember Connie? Strong?
Yes.
Consolis?
Yes.
Mayor Agnew?
Yes. All right, the motion carries, and there will be an amendment for an additional $22,080. Thank you. All right, department monthly reports, we have none. City council announcements, communications, and reports. I'll start with Councilmember Connie.
MCAG was supposed to meet last Monday. We did not have a quorum because the two supervisors, Mr. Girardi and Mr. Haschak, were in Sacramento helping to swear in our state Senator Maguire, who is now the president pro tem of the state senate, which is a huge win for rural communities. First time we've had a rural senator president of the state senate. So this was very exciting. MCAG is rescheduled to next month, and that's it.
Councilmember Strong?
Okay, thank you. So my three agencies that I represent the city on, I'll go through them. Sonoma Clean Power met at the beginning, February 1st, and I was not able to attend. But there is an interesting program that they are offering grants for e-bikes, electric bikes, for employees to try to cut back on commuter traffic using cars. And as my, my understanding is that Walter Cullen is going to be pursuing options that might be advantageous for the city employees, including coordinating perhaps with the police department. So these could be both for commute to and from the job, but also within the city. So I thank you for taking that on.
And if I could add, that grant funding is also open to other nonprofits in our community that can demonstrate that there would be a benefit as well.
Yeah, I'm hoping that they will be pursuing that with the hospital in particular, also schools, any larger employer companies can be eligible for this. And it basically makes the cost of an employee buying a bike and all the accouterments that they need for that electric bike, it pretty much pays the whole cost. So that was really a nice program. Their next meeting will be March 7th. This is Sonoma Clean Power, and I will look forward to some updates then. Menecino Solid Waste Management Authority met on February 8th, and the important announcement here is that the next Hazmobil here in Willets will be April 4th and 5th. At the meeting, there was still a lot of questions about the budget and also the data on how much hazardous waste is being processed, what are the different categories, how much is coming in from remote location, Hazmobil, and how much is being processed at the transfer stations. And since the entire thing is now under the same ownership, which is basically C and S, we felt there should be more analysis of what are the, you know, the advantages and opportunities for, and for the public, you know, how to handle hazardous waste. So the next meeting, we're hoping for some answers to some of those questions, and that's going to be March 14th at 9:00 in the morning. They also announced that there is now a buyback center opening at the end of this month down in Ukiah, Tuesdays, Fridays, and Saturdays. And if people want, they should go to the Mendo Recycle website to get more information. And the third agency is Economic Development and Financing Corporation. They also met on February 8th. And one of the items that came up was definitely related to Willets, which is there is a proposed buyer for the Noyo theater. And that applicant is interested in getting a fairly substantial loan from EDFC. It's a larger loan than what we are usually able to do at EDFC. So we basically directed staff to do further research and see whether we could partner and what are the risks and what are the advantages of that. But there was definitely interest from the EDFC board to look into it further. And I put in a word that we'd like the Noyo theater to stay in business. I think I had previously announced that the bylaws were being revised to make us, EDFC, not necessarily under the Brown Act. And we've now got legal advice that would probably have to be under the Brown Act anyway as long as we have elected members serving on the board. So they're still working on that. And the next meeting of that group is March 14th at 2:00 PM. Generally, both, well, Sonoma Clean Power, EDFC, and ESMWA, the Solid Waste Management, I'm usually attending from here remotely. So if any members of the public want to get involved, they can just come here to City Hall and sit in on those meetings. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Consolis?
I had LAFCO on Monday, the 5th, and we picked basically officers, or our chairperson is Mo Mo Hearn, our vice chair is Jerry Ward. And we kind of kept all the committee assignments the same. I think everybody was kind of happy where they were. And then we went over our work plan and, let's see here. And went over our mid-year financial. And so that was the extent of that. So, and I don't have League of Cities yet. That's coming here. And like I said, there is a public safety committee that I'm on with League of Cities, but I'm not going to travel to Southern California for the amounts to a three-hour meeting. I don't think it's pertinent for us or fiscally, it's something I should do. So that's all I have.
All right. Go ahead.
I forgot to add one other thing about, Menecino Solid Waste Management Authority has been overshooting the budget, and their belief is that most of that is getting rid of, getting, disposing of all of the hazardous waste that had been stockpiled there at the Ukiah facility. And part of their analysis going forward is, is that a chronic problem or was that a one-time solution to the stockpile and making sure that the budget going forward is sustainable?
Thank you, Mitch. MTA had nothing of significance to report from our last meeting. And next week, we have transportation, finance, and major K meetings. So lots of committee meetings next week. And...
I just want to have an item further to attention of the council. This is a follow-up from the previous meeting where I mentioned the status of the county museum. So this is one of those situations, the board of supervisors, I believe, heard the message that was communicated from the council to them regarding the museum. So at their last board of supervisor meeting, they made a motion which was approved, basically instructing the county museum staff to start moving ahead with the transition plan for a community-based or museum-based foundation operation. In that motion, it identified clearly the city of Willets as a partner that needs to be, as part of that process. I attended a meeting this morning with the Sijiji planning group of the museum, and we're looking at forming a steering committee to at least start laying out the groundwork for that transition. It's still very early in the process. No hard points have been described. Karen Matson is looking to bring in the expert from Kern County who oversaw their transition. Mike McCoy, he's going to be here March 11th, 12th, or sometime during that week. I am going to schedule a meeting with that. If any council member wants to sit in on separate meetings, or if I can schedule something, please let me know. I think what I, basically, I want to convey this point to the council is I think now we have to be engaged in this whole process. The county is still a little, they're not willing to put a lot of funding into this process yet, but I think it's a return to corner, and they're recognizing the importance of the transition and recognizing that the city as a community has a stake in what happens with that museum.
Did they make a formal announcement about approving the money to be moved from the community foundation?
Yes. That's an understanding for that. Community Foundation was in attendance on today's meeting, and they recognize, yes, they saw the value, and they recognize they will agree to that.
Okay, so just for the council's understanding, that $500,000 endowment that the museum received last year had been moved from the county finances to community foundations, essentially to safekeeping. And while originally in the intent of not to spend that money on operations, but to let it be sort of a nest egg, it was agreed by members at the community ad hoc meeting that using a small portion of that money to help fund the project manager essentially for the transition period would be a smart move, because the county certainly isn't going to pay for that. So it sounds like now the county has made some formal announcement that they're willing to remove some of that funding.
Correct.
As a community representative, do you want to attend these meetings?
I think so.
Okay. Then we'll continue to have Councilmember Connie.
Member Connie's outspoken comment to Commissioner or Supervisor Girardi struck the chord. Congratulations.
Good.
Very outspoken advocate for the community.
I've been playing nice since then, so hopefully I'm not working too many years.
Congratulations. You scored ahead.
Sounds like you're going to continue to be our advocate. Thank you. I also just wanted to report that CNS Solutions still has not responded in relation to that email that was sent, asking for a meeting to discuss garbage, actually, so.
But they have put out a calendar now.
They've been pushing out some information, but they haven't unfortunately set up a time where we can have a conversation with, the intent was that city manager and I would be able to sit in on a meeting where we could share some of the community's concerns. So still working on that. And then lastly, I just wanted to remind the council that it is that time of year where we should have started the city manager's evaluation. So at the next meeting, you should expect that there will be a closed session item on there so that we can begin working on the annual evaluation. Okay. And with that, we will move to Goodenwolfer. Anybody have any?
I do. I guess on the 23rd of February, we have, Sober Grad has an enchilada feed that they're doing drive-up, so they're selling tickets around town. And then also that night is Chili Cook Off at the Senior Center. So, I thought I'd... So, thought I'd put that out.
Anyone else? Go ahead.
On February 4th, the WELL organization, Willets Economic Localization, had a celebration of our 20th year, and we had a very good turnout despite lots of rain, and we had a lot of good ideas for how we can make Willets even better than it already is. We celebrated some of the wonderful things about the community, and identified lots of things that we're going to hope to address. Then we also had a follow-up meeting of our coordinated committee with several new volunteers coming forward. One of the things that I'm really excited about is that there's a really active group trying to figure out how to get a warming center in Willets for our homeless population to have shelter when it's like it is right now, raining like crazy. They have a group that's been meeting regularly at the Methodist Church, and they're not going to make it through this winter, but hopefully with the momentum and community support, we can identify a way forward to get something in place before next winter. There's also going to be a talk by Helen Valandas about our homeless situation, and how to support people that are unhoused at the Avenues to Wellness, and that's going to be on February 24th, 4 o'clock at Methodist Church also, if people are interested in that. I could refer you to either Helen or to Jane McCabe, who's been getting that group going. We're also still working on farm-to-school grants and various other projects, which I'll include in as we get to them. Thank you.
All right, and the exciting news, probably just recently, maybe was it last week, was Willets was on national news, and even on the ABC World News, so pretty exciting, people near and far are talking about the city of Willets, and we had some opportunities to really shine and showcase what we have here. So, thanks to Edie and her 116th birthday, and making it into the Guinness Book of World Records. So with that, we will close this evening at 7, what do we got, 7:24, wishing you all happy Valentine's Day.